Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, I have absent with regrets.
Make a motion, we excuse Counselor Dennis.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carry. Any declarations of conflict of interest? We're good. Approval of agenda, additions or deletions? So we have 10A as an addition. Muscally of Yarmouth regarding Remo. Anything else?
I've got something for Frank, and I'll just ask what he does.
Certainly, sure, okay. And for everybody in the audience there, we've got McDonald's Coffee Down back, donated generously, and we're loving it. Thank you. So help yourselves. Okay, get right at it then. Staff report, CAO report, any questions for the CAO? And I realize we just got this, so if anybody has questions, you can get ahold of, you can get ahold of our CAO, all right? Fire department? Chief, anything?
My report. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for the chief? We can always find you. Thanks, Chief. Okay, operational services, Chad? And the transit, transit system ridership data. Is there anything you needed to say, or does anybody have any questions?
It's struggling.
It's struggling because of, yeah.
Well, if you're looking, if you're looking at the numbers compared to last year...
You know, that figured out, it struck, if you had broken down equipment that you bought and all the rest is struck regardless of the numbers.
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to make excuses.
He's not, no, he's not making excuses, he's explaining to, he's just explaining to us.
No, what I was gonna say is that the numbers aren't really comparing favorably to last year because the bus has been out of service, and we've been relying on the replacement van for good part.
Sort of like the MDP, MDP canceling fare.
Trying to get back up and running.
Yeah.
A little bit more money. But in rather terms, a blue town like Eric, a lot of them.
It is. Go ahead there, Counselor McLeod.
Chad, the blanks spots there are the times that the ferry, that the ferry, that the transit bus is not in operation.
That's a good idea, Counselor.
It could just be...
I don't care.
Yeah. These spots here. Yeah.
That we had, we had...
No, not necessarily. It just might be a gap in the days in a month, that's all.
All right.
Yeah.
I was, I was trying to, when I was looking at that last night, I was trying to wonder what it was.
No, we still account for ridership numbers even when...
Even when the other bus, other, okay.
Good, you're good, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Chad? Yeah, when's the new one coming?
That's a question for Dave.
Okay.
I think the tentative date was sometime in November, I believe.
November?
Again, question for Dave.
Charles, do you know when the new bus is coming? You don't know? No, okay, thank you. That was your last unofficial duty. Okay, good stuff. Thanks, Chad. Planning department? So there is an update there, which is good. Asset management and infrastructure, that would have been Dave. Yeah. Asset management, Charles, is there anything you needed to say besides what's, oh, it's not yet.
Updates, Your Worship.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Finance? Jerry? Jerry has something.
No, just a request for approval for discussion, destruction of documents.
Oh, yeah.
Lindsey, Lindsey found a day or so there last week to go down and make a list of it for us. It's been about five or six years since we've shredded anything, so it's just a list of accounting records that are more than, well, they're probably all eight years old or older. So we legally have to keep some things up to seven years, so we've got the space. We've made a habit of keeping most everything up for seven years to keep ourselves off anyone's bad list, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Jeff and Jerry, in the bylaw, it refers to the CAO as the clerk. Is that important that we update that any, any time?
It's, it's not really important that you update it. The MGA outlines responsibilities of the clerk specifically under that terminology, as well as the CAO. I carry both of those responsibilities, so there are many times when I'm signing bylaws and whatnot that, that that terminology is the correct terminology, so, no, that's fine.
So, so in today's digital age, are these documents saved digitally?
These are, these are paper copies.
But we have them digitally?
Not these ones, we wouldn't.
Okay. Go ahead there, Cliff. Oh, sorry.
For six years, we usually tell our clients to be safe, take seven, and you can shred everything. And that, I looked at the stuff, Your Worship, and it's all stuff that's more than seven years. I'm comfortable with proceeding in the way dictated or mandated in our by, it's in our bylaw to do this. So I so moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary? Motion carry. Recreation.
My report circulate.
Okay, so we have a quest, we have some questions. Go ahead there, Phil.
Thank you, Your Worship. Frank, I know we've talked about it a couple times at, at our meetings, and I'm just seeing on social media that it's kinda perked up again. Somebody took a trip to another community, I think it was in Ontario, saw a splash park. Maybe is that something that you could put on the next agenda for Yarmouth Recreation?
Yes, nothing really has been done other than look at some other local splash parks in the area. Shawburn County, I think, is the last one to build one.
And we got some information on the one in...
Kenfield.
Kenfield, I think, too, didn't we?
So we, we've done some preliminary research, I guess, but nothing too detailed. I did do a, I guess, a tour of a splash pad in, at a recreation conference in Bible Hill a few years ago, so the director there gave me a lot of information on good things to do and things not to do, and one of the big things that seemed to ring through was the type of plant that you put in for, for the water. It's a costly venture to recycle water that goes through your park, but there, apparently there's green funding out there available for projects like that if you're conserving water. So, but as far as locations locally, nothing really concrete, no, no surveys or no real in-depth discussions have taken place. I think at one time at a previous council meeting with a previous council, I think they had discussed possibly a splash pad at the Yarmouth South Playground because of the infrastructure that's, that was, that's still in the building for the old wading pool.
But I think everything, from what I understand, everything underground, gone, yeah.
So, so that was some misinformation, but, and then there's been just some talk about possible location being Beacon Park.
And I think the thing about Beacon Park would be, there'd be a great symmetry there with the community garden and those guys asking about washroom facilities and other things, because if you had a park, you would need a change room in washroom facilities, right? But that'd be something we could talk about at, at Yarmouth Recreation.
So I haven't seen the post, but I guess some of the conversation on Facebook, I think there is someone in the community that's interested in starting a community group, and they're welcome to contact us, and we can start, you know, just like any other interests, we can start working with them to...
Yeah, I just posted. I, I responded to the post, and, and honestly, two years ago, some people came to me, and I don't know why it didn't get off the ground. Something happened, and we just didn't move. I think we checked that infrastructure at Yarmouth South and, and a couple other things, and then it just kinda dispersed. So I put your name in, but it didn't tag you. So I'll, I'll just have them contact you, and Linda Gallagher was one of them.
Okay, great.
So, you know, Jana Jeffrey we were mentioning. So I did say we will go through recreation, and I'll just hook them up with you, and we'll, we'll see what happens.
Sounds good.
Good stuff. Okay.
You going away from the bylaw? No. No? Okay.
Okay.
Just checking out.
Jim, you're good?
Frank, I spend a fair amount of time early in the morning at the Forest Street Ballfields. One day I noticed the lights were being changed, or because they were burned out or whatever. Is there ever, is there an LED project that, that might, has that ever been talked about in the committee, or?
John Darcy, our facilities coordinator's investigated a little bit into that, basically switching everything over to LED, very costly venture, so what we were thinking of is looking at maybe doing it over time, replacing standards one at a time, sort of thing. I think each field, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how many standards we have on each field, but there's, there's probably...
I think there might be eight or nine altogether.
On, on the smaller one, there's eight or nine, and then on the larger one, I think there's a dozen. So, and I think John just preliminarily mentioned about $5,000 just for, for the lighting. Now, what, what that means as far as switching over to the, to the panel, all that stuff, it's, but yeah, it's, it's something that we've looked at, and again, we've been told that there is green funding available for, for that type of project as well, whenever you're switching over to LED.
Yeah, I just think it's a worthwhile consideration sometime, if you wanna investigate it and then, and then put it, make it one of your things to do over a period of years, do one post at a time, or whatever, however it does.
And John's hoping that the major issue that we have with the lights is the way the, the bulbs and ballast are. Any type of vibration, which we get a lot of wind, pops the, the light out. So with this LED configuration, we're hoping that that wouldn't happen, because there are different type of cells, so.
Raymond does a really good job of looking after those fields. They're beautiful, beautifully well-kept fields down there.
Yes, thank you.
Good. Any more questions for Frank? Let's go ahead, Cliff.
Frank, I was over at, we call it Veterans Field on Forest Street, I think, right? That's better. I just popped in the other night, there was one guy and one kid doing T-ball, nothing else going on there in daytime, but the shingles on that accessory building, you must have noticed, they, you've gotta do something about that, they're in hard shape.
They are in hard shape.
Especially at the peak of the war, I mean, they're gone.
Yep, we're, we're not leaking anywhere, but they're, it's any day, so that's another project on our radar.
Okay, good.
Good. Thank you, Frank. Economic development. Hello, Ms. Natalie.
Hello, Your Worship.
So we have a couple things here. We've got the non-medical cannabis and the front yard solid waste. So...
First, are there any, any questions on my report, July report?
Yeah, there's lots, lots going on.
So I can give a quick update on the Get Involved project, the first one being the non-medical cannabis project that we did some public engagement online. The results were we had four hun, sorry, 149 visits to the project page.
Really?
And we had, we had five new registrations because of it, and we had 10 contributors on one of the discussion forums and four on the other. So this is the first time we're using the discussion forum tool, which basically, in this particular case, we asked a question, or we made a statement, and then we asked the public to basically start a discussion. It's, it's fully moderated. So one of the questions we asked about was what their concerns would be about cannabis in public places. Forty-three visitors viewed the forum, 10 contributors, eight comments, 14 votes, whether they agreed or disagreed with the comment. As you can see in the report, we had five contributors that felt that legalized non-medical cannabis should follow the existing regulations and bylaws of the Smoke Free Act, alcohol consumption and town smoking bylaws, and I've identified the specific comments from those contributors. We had two contributors felt that the town smoking bylaw should be amended to not allow smoking of any type near private buildings, and again, we've identified those specific comments for your consideration. The second discussion forum was about growing medical cannabis at home. We had four contributors that saw no issues with new regulations allowing the growing of non-medical cannabis at home, so four out of four said, let's, let's, let's get it done. So as of, as of July the 21st, that's been the public contribution to date on those subjects. Also on the site, there is a document library, so there is a lot of good information coming out from the province related to the cannabis legalization, different toolkits around impairment, et cetera. So all of that information is on the Get Involved site, under the document library, as they provide more information that's shareable from a promotion of the legalization that's coming forward in October. We'll share that on our social media and at the Get Involved. Any questions related to that report?
Good. Okay, thanks, Natalie.
The second report is the front yard solid waste storage. This council had requested we get some engagement. There's a current bylaw that's under amendment that's already passed the first hearing. And so in this case, we did two types of engagement. One, we did a quick poll, would you support allowing front yard solid waste storage in the front yard? That was a quick yes or no. And then we did a guest book where people can sign in and provide their comments. So in this particular engagement, we had 493 people that visited that project page. It provided 22 additional registrations to the site.
Oh.
And we had 31 people participating in the poll. Fifty-five percent of them said they would allow front yard solid waste storage containers, and 45% said they wouldn't. On the guest book, we had 85 people visiting the guest book, six providing their opinions. Two out of six were supportive to allow front yard solid waste storage, and I've identified their comments there. And four out of six were not supportive and also provided their comments. So on the poll, it was favorable, and on the individual comments, it wasn't favorable. And unless there are any questions there.
So what, what are our next steps with this? Thank you, Natalie, by the way.
So, Your Worship, we had, we had gone to public hearing, we'd had comment from a couple of landlords who, who supported the front yard storage. We had one citizen who came forward and was concerned about the front yard storage, and we suggested that we use the engagement platform to seek broader opinion from the community, which I think this has done somewhat of a job in terms of reaching, reaching people and getting some opinion. We have a bylaw that has gone through first reading, as Natalie suggested, which suggests no change in the bylaw, that, that we not permit front yard storage of, of solid waste. You know, if council wants to proceed with the bylaw as written, provide that direction. If council would like us to do something different, provide that direction, and, and we will. And Natalie, is this still live on our site?
Yes, both of them are.
Right, so, so more information may be gathered. You know, the, as, as it sits right now, and, and as you are aware, we did advise those with front yard storage containers that they were contrary to our bylaw. A number of them were removed over the last few months by the, by the owners, but not everybody agrees that it's not a good thing, and so there is some anticipation of what is council going to do, or are we gonna change the bylaw, or leave it, or leave it the same. I did have contact from one landlord whose manager did present at a previous public hearing, I believe he was gonna correspond further with council on the issue. You know, it is, I guess it is in your, in your hands which direction you'd like to go with this. There certainly is two points of view.
Initially, when this came before us, and I was, I believe I was in favor of changing the bylaw, but this is just my own opinion now as a, not only as a counselor, but as a citizen, that I think I'd like to leave the bylaw storage as it is now, side yard or rear yard.
I agree.
As tough as it is for perhaps a number of people, I mean, as I travel throughout the town and county, it's, I think it would be a really difficult thing, and one more thing for us to enforce. I know we don't enforce in the county, but we, but it's, it's not, it's not a pretty site in a number of cases, but there are some good examples out there, so I want to compliment the people that are doing it that way, and I tell them that they do care about their property. I mean, as I've teased before, I have to wait until I see the garbage man coming down the road before I can put mine out on the side of the road, or else I'll use up one of my nine lives with Dawn, so.
[laughing]
So anyway, I, that's, at this point, unless I hear differently from around the table, I'm in favor of keeping the bylaw as it is today. Storage in the side or backyard, is that right, Jeff? The side and/or backyard?
Good. Go ahead, deputy.
And I'm just wondering, Your Worship, if we did go the other way and allow it on the street side of your home, is, what remedies do we have if, I think Diane's here, she's said there, there might be an opportunity that some of the compost bins this time of year are not the best shape, or don't smell the best? Is there any remedies that we have if we did change it, that being bad smelling, being unkept, being not clean, being? Or is it just a neighborly thing to do to keep it clean and?
Well, that's the problem.
Yeah, okay.
Some neighbors... Go ahead there, who's next?
Who else?
Oh, wait a second, Cliff. Sorry, you're, you're on. I didn't see his leg go, but you're next.
No problem. For me, I'd, I'd like to change it, I'd like to see it changed, but I agree with, with Counselor Mooney, we have to, and maybe that's, that's where the difficulty lies, but there are some beautiful ones there that are in good shape, that should not be, you know, penalized for what they've done, but it has to be enforced, and I guess that's the issue. If we're having issues with, with ones that are troublesome, then perhaps we should relook at that, too, but at this point, for me, I'd like to see it changed with some, some strict regulations in place about, you know, what they should look like and what kind of shape they're in. But for me, I'd, I'd like to see it at least addressed.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
So, Your Worship, I was initially in favor, and I continue to be, but I do acknowledge the concerns of the people who express those concerns. Yes, it would be a problem with some of the people, but I thought we could manage it with a permitting system, one that where you had, you'd have to have a permit, and you'd have defined parameters and circumstances. You wouldn't get a permit in just every case, you'd get a permit where you met certain criteria, and the permit would be revocable at the town, town's option at any time when it deemed the activity was not being conducted in accordance with the permit, which would get, it'd allow, it would be a safe and easy way to deal with the people who aren't complying. You know, one of the persons that spoke, spoke up said, I think that the storage units would be okay if everyone would maintain them and keep them clean. However, not everyone respects their own property, and I believe this would look bad for the town, so I would be against it, but if we could find a way that would allow the people that already are doing it without objection, then I think we should try to find it, because it makes their properties and the people in them, using those properties, mostly seniors, I think, it makes it possible for those seniors to occupy those premises more readily. So I, I'm not ready to throw this out with the bathwater at this time. I'm not sure you can do it, but I, it, the permitting idea, I think, has some merit if we could, if we're authorized to do it on the bylaw.
Watch me get crucified. It's, it's, it's a town, we're in town, we're in close proximity to our neighbors. We've got green bins out there, they smell horrific, and we have not just visitors, but we have, we have residents going for walks and, and, you know, trying to enjoy the town. The, the homes are all close to the sidewalk, the, the garbage is right there on the sidewalk. And I just think it takes away from everything that we are trying to create, that, not just aesthetically, but it just smells bad. For some reason, folks don't understand that you need to wrap your compost in newspaper, or put it in bags, or, you know, all those other ways to prohibit the, the odor. And I know, I know as sure as I'm sitting here that there would be some folks that will be upset, but you know what? We're in a town, and folks have been getting their garbage to the curb once a week, or once every two weeks, for as long as we, we've existed. And, and the problem is, when you, when you allow one, you have to allow them all. And who's going to judge what looks good, what doesn't? And frankly, I, I live in town, and I don't wanna be driving up my street with a garbage disposal bin on every property. I, that's just my opinion, I, I simply think that if we let this go loose, that's exactly what's going to happen. People are just gonna throw their garbage in, it gets, it gets stacked too high. Those green bins never get moved from some of the properties, they just continue to pile the garbage in until it gets picked up, and, and we have to walk by that, so I don't think it's fair for the citizens in, in that way. We're trying to maintain neat and clean, and, and I wanna say this very clearly as well, there are some that are doing this very, very well, but the danger in allowing it for everyone is the very reason that we have rules in the first place, and, and it's for those that don't know how to do it well. And, and that's the shame of it, but that's, that's where I sit. So go ahead, Counselor.
This is a bit of a naive comment, but Jeff, this all has arisen over the past several months, when Jeff realized that we were not abiding by the bylaw. In the meantime, we had landlords, and I'll mention a name, John Daly, who has a number of, looks after a number of residential properties and maintains them well. Jeff, a bylaw is a bylaw, it's black or white, there's no, there's no... Jeff, a bylaw is a bylaw, it's black or white, there's no such thing as grandfathering in.
[inaudible]
No, but I think that makes it difficult, we said an example.
[laughing] You can't grandfather something in that was illegal in the first place.
But, all I'm saying, from Jeff's point of view, or earlier, he made a, several months ago, talked about enforcing it, and so a number of landlords and residences have received notices that they're not abiding by the bylaw. I'm saying that someone like John Daly, you know, could abide, listening to Wade talk, you know, John's garbage box is not unattractive, it's okay. Anyway, I realize that what I said is a bit of a naive comment, but I wanted to bring it up.
So what's the, what do you need?
But painted a picture, you painted a picture and changed my thoughts on it, and as desirable as it might be for some of our responsible landlords, and there are many, unless they could find a way to manage the irresponsible people, that's effective, I think we have to leave it the way it is. So I'll make a motion that we accept this staff recommendation to leave the bylaw as it is.
Any more discussion? Go ahead.
So, for clarity, we'll bring it back to the August council agenda for second reading, as is.
Yes, sure. That's my motion.
Okay, for the second reading. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
Aye.
Okay. Front yard solid waste.
Plus, you still have an opportunity, Your Worship, to...
Oh, yeah, two names.
Plus, you still have an opportunity at the next council meeting to discuss it.
Yeah, it's not closed.
Yeah, sure.
I changed mine again.
Yeah. Okay, business arising, Terms of Reference Accessibility Committee. C A O?
Thank you, Worship. Staff was tasked with developing a terms of reference for an accessibility committee from the last council meeting. What I've done is gone and, I knew Halifax Regional Municipalities had an accessibility committee for some time, so I went to their website, I grabbed their administrative order, had Linda assist me in amending it to fit our context, and in terms of some of the words, so we don't have administrative orders, we have policies and specific references like that. But other than that, the content of that policy proposal is exactly what Halifax Regional Municipality has for their accessibility committee, and so if it is your wish to consider that as policy, we can discuss it here. If there is a recommendation to take it forward, it would come up at the next council meeting as a policy, and be able to be approved there. If you wish to amend it, we can talk about that, and possibly have it prepared. The requirement under the act is that you have to have the policy seven days ahead of the date of consideration, so if we can get any amendments done prior to the August council meeting, you'd have the opportunity to approve it there, otherwise it would come up in September.
You're going to need to put your light on, so we can...
Your Worship, I can't spot it here right now, scanning through it, but there was one wording there that I was concerned about, in that it puts too heavy a whip on her back to get it done. I know that the province is, what, aiming out for 2030, I think, to be complete, but, and it was sort of like in the objectives or something here, but we have a chance to bring that up as an amendment later. It might be minor, like one word, but it might be one word that's quite important in terms of the flexibility we have in getting this done. We don't want to box ourselves in too tight, and yet we want to make sure we can comply with the objectives overall. I'll leave those, now that I know that we, I'll find that again for the next meeting.
Make the motion.
What was the date, Jeff, of this bylaw? Was that that you investigated?
Sorry, the one that I referred to at Halifax?
Yes.
They've had one in place there, I'm going to say for at least ten years, and they recently amended it with the Accessibility Act, so this is the current version, but they have, in fact, had a committee for some number of years in Halifax, I think around ten.
That's what I was wondering, and thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I think we also will accept the terms of reference for the accessibility committee.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Grants to organizations. C A O?
Your Worship, that may be a discussion item for today, or a reminder item. When we went through the grants to organizations process back in the winter, early spring, council discussed that we'd like to bring it up later in the year, and talk about what we'd like to do differently with the grants to organizations process, so I don't have any specific recommendations for you, it was something you referred to yourselves, so...
Put this to next month, maybe.
Put it on again, I would like to answer.
Okay, so this...
Is that okay, next month?
It's time to take a vote?
Yeah.
On the August Committee of the whole.
On the August Committee of the whole, yeah. So whatever we're going to do, we need to be ahead of the game, give a heads up to the organization.
So that's a reminder.
Right on. Thank you. Okay. Oh, this one's exciting, appointment of town engineer and traffic authority. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. For council's benefit, February 11th, 1991, Dave Ernst joined us as the town engineer, and more recently, in the last ten years or so, he also took on the duty of traffic authority. Dave is scheduled to retire next Friday, and he's not here with us this afternoon, he's, I understand, with family, at an important function to him, and I think he's going to have to get used to that, as he enters retirement, and so, just to say that Dave has served the town well for over 27 years, and, you know, certainly with mixed feelings that we see him leave, we're happy for him, of course, and wishing him well, and I had some private words with David earlier today. However, that brings us to, I guess, a new chapter in the town, and as council has met, Charles Hartland, a young engineer that we were able to recruit and hire about a month ago, and Dave has assisted us in, over the last number of weeks, in helping with the transition, helping to prepare Charles for the responsibility he's about to undertake for the town. And so, Your Worship, I would ask that the council consider appointing Charles Hartland as the town engineer, effective August the 7th, 2018.
Okay. Dawn moved, seconded by Wade. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Congratulations.
Yes. Congratulations, first of all. Welcome to Yarmouth. And welcome also to his lovely wife, Tara, and William's not here, okay? So, I'm sure William will be very proud, too.
Tara's going to miss another meeting.
That's right. Tara will be here for every meeting, there's coffee, life is good, life is good. We're, in seriousness, we're not always serious at this table, but we're thrilled to have you. And I know it's a big undertaking, because there's just so many moving pieces, but you will, you're settling in well, it appears, and you have a sense of humor, it's a good thing, because, hang on tight. Get in and hang on, it's going to be quite a ride.
Could be very.
So, we're glad you could be here, Tara, to his appointment.
I just think it's...
Okay. Good. Business, Sarah Corning Society. Trying to get it off of your thing there, that's okay.
I'll speak to that.
Mm-hmm, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. So, you have some correspondence there from the Sarah Corning Society, and I may have some explaining to do.
Yeah, me too.
With regards to this. So, the Sarah Corning Society's been led, I think, or supported, led by the Chounds, Mr. and Mrs. Chown, and they were recently in town on June 28th, and Her Worship and I met with them. So they were giving us an update on a statue that is being commissioned of Sarah, a life-size statue, and they're in the process of looking for a location in the town where that would be installed, and so they kind of gave us an update, they gave us pictures of the statue concept, and all kinds of different information, and updates on things that have been happening. So the question of where the statue should be came up, and during the discussion, I had this moment of either brilliance or foolishness, depending on your point of view.
I thought it was quite brilliant.
Well, we'll see. So, the...
Please pop through that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll find out later what people think, but the...
Just don't tweet it.
During the process of doing the downtown blueprint, there was a concept for the western end of the Brown Street parking lot, that it become a public plaza of some sort, and in the blueprint, it's just that, it's just a public pedestrian plaza with a couple of commercial kiosk possibilities there. It occurred to me, thinking about this statue, and how, you know, people may want to have their picture taken, how there maybe should be interpretive panels, and obviously, there's a lot of support from different organizations and countries for this recognition, that it might become a destination thing, and what if that statue was in a plaza area, similar to what you see in bigger centers, I'm thinking of Ottawa, actually, where I see a number of statues that people frequent, and they take pictures, and they're shared, and it becomes something that you see, that you must see when you go there. This is one of our local international heroes, and it may be appropriate, at least, I thought it might be appropriate, to consider developing a plaza in that location, in the middle of our downtown, to recognize this woman, but perhaps it's even a big enough plaza that there would be opportunity for future recognition of other heroes to be within that plaza. So, that's under consideration, I guess, or for your consideration, but also, you know, there are other possibilities, other possibilities where this statue could be, but they would like to do the unveiling next year, and so there's a little bit of urgency around identifying a location, so that the process of design and preparation can occur in time for an unveiling next year. So, that's what that letter is about. There's also an event coming up next Friday at the Yarmouth Historical Society and Museum, to which you've been invited, and I invite you to read, to read what Mrs. Chown had to say in her letter, and I guess I'll stop talking, and if there's any questions, Your Worship and I will try to answer.
So, Jeff, just locate exactly where you're talking about.
So, there's, this is online, but this is a page out of the blueprint, and so if this is Main Street, this is the Brown Street parking lot, so it would be the upper portion of the parking lot.
Opposite YMCA.
Where that clock is, basically, yeah.
Right behind the clock, that portion of the parking lot.
Do you want to continue on accessible parking spaces that are there now?
They would likely have to move.
I don't think that would be...
You'll have to move?
I...
Don't apologize, it's...
I did this a long time ago, and got shit.
You're right, it has to be discussed.
I'm writing an amendment.
Oh, here we go.
In your Terms of Reference Accessibility, you guys are taking away with this motion some accessibility laws, which should be brought out.
Yes, but then you find a place where we can replace those.
So, except for the little letters. Want to change them? Ever?
No, no, no.
I'm not sure.
We good? Okay, so, are you looking for...
I was hoping it'd be a little bit funnier.
Funny?
Yeah, what?
[laughing] Here's the thing, we can always find a way around things, we can always find accessible parking in different places.
How did you pass that bylaw, the way you got drafted without the...
Yes, and that's why, yes, and that's why we have you at the table. I'm telling you right now, I wouldn't want to sit at this table without you.
Your Worship, I think the Chounds are...
Go ahead.
I think the Chounds are coming to town, it looks like, on August the...
Yeah, they're here next week.
Third?
Yes.
Is that a Friday?
Yes. Yeah.
They might have another opportunity to, because they had some other places in here, too, they're talking about where she's from, actually, over in Chicago, is one of the places.
Yeah, but that's, they want it to be, number one, accessible to everybody, they want it to be public, and one of the nicest, the rendering we saw, basically, it's in clay form right now, but her arm was out, I think, if I'm not mistaken, her arm was out, so that ability to have, you know, a photo with just walking by, and, you know, so it needs to be in a high-profile place.
And I was going to say, maybe, next to, I know Mrs. Chounds related to Brian Roden, I was thinking about the Beth West, and I was thinking about the, next to Sunset Terrace, and it says, and it answers that Sunset Terrace site is already still available, but there's still, like councillor Hood said, here we are with the new traffic authority here, but not until the 7th.
[laughing]
Talking about councillor Hood is right, I thought it was at the bottom end of the parking lot, but, like you said, is one of the opportunities, or one of the reasons that we gave that wasn't ours, but one of the reasons is you have available parking for accessibility issues just down the street next to the Chinese restaurant, and then here we are, we're going to put a statue there, and then put those guys farther away. I know there's lots of opportunities for accessible parking, but maybe if that thing, we were talking about the Maude Lewis thing, maybe do it at, maybe kind of turn, flip the thing around, do it at the bottom end with the Maude Lewis thing, because we're talking about doing the Maude Lewis's house at one time, and maybe flip it, I don't know, maybe have a...
Maybe both.
Yeah.
Maybe it's what Jeff was saying in the beginning, that we, it's a, I mean, it's where Maude grew up, that's the...
Yeah. Maybe if they're going to be here earlier that day, too, is maybe go for a little drive, and have a look around again.
Do that. Okay, we'll leave it then, for now?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, good.
I think that's a whole park, and switch the standing. This is a visiting park.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be, but they wouldn't be as convenient as they are now, because they're ready to stop in the parking lot, and when you park, the beauty of it is, there's no car driving by, you want the other shop, and somebody swings around, and a light for you, but now I'm on the other street from where the photo is filmed.
Yeah.
Where the old store is. A little later.
Well, that's, now that's heritage property.
The heritage park.
That's their property.
The new alcohol, and they place some things here.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll leave it and take that...
So, that handicap place would be accessible to the place where people get moved in.
And, yeah, and don't forget, like, when we talk about accessible parking, we are still in the midst of doing that parking survey, to see what's where, and, so we've got all kinds of, to see how many as well. All right, recommendation from pension committee, public service. So the motion is that council's agreement be sought based on what we know today to continue the investigation into the public service superannuation plan with an intention to put it to the membership for a vote.
That's a recommendation from the...
Is this from the pension committee?
Pension committee.
Recommendation? Okay. Go ahead.
So, your worship, we had, the Pension Committee had a fairly lengthy meeting with our pension consultants that gave rise to this motion. There was some information presented at that meeting, but there was some information that wasn't available in terms of modeling, you know, what does this really look like? And so, the Director of Finance and I have both done some work on this. And so, we would prefer that, rather than proceeding with that motion, if you would refer it back to the committee for further study. And that would give us an opportunity to meet with the committee, share the additional information, and determine if, in fact, the committee wishes to stay with this recommendation or modify it based on the additional information.
Can we have the committee repress, Rod?
Counselor McLeod is the council representative, Director of Finance, myself, Director of Human Resources. We have a member of the Fire Department and a member of Public Works.
Could we put the engineer on there, too? I'm just joking. Just wanted to see him sweat. He didn't, he didn't even wince. Go ahead there, counselor.
I'll make a motion and refer this activity back to our Pension Committee.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. We've got previously distributed, we're good. There's one addition, which is the Remo. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, I'm pleased to, I guess, report and draw to your attention the letter from the District of Yarmouth. The CAOs have met and have talked about the Remo. And Janine has offered to facilitate the process of creating the Remo, which the three municipalities, or at least the other two, have agreed to. And I'm asking you to basically mirror the recommendation of the District of Yarmouth in two respects. One is to appoint Max Stuhlberger as the acting EMC for three months, renewable until the term, until the Remo transition is complete. And further, that Janine Doucette be appointed as Remo Transition Facilitator.
Who's Max?
So Max Stuhlberger is currently the, I would say, the deputy or the assistant EMO coordinator. He worked with Harold Richardson in that capacity. He is involved with the Radio Club and is, I think he's probably our best choice to fill that role in the interim.
Okay. Motion, your worship, that we appoint Max Stuhlberger, acting EMC coordinator for a three-month renewable term until the Remo transition is complete. And we also ask that Janine Doucette be appointed as Remo Transition Facilitator.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Your worship, that meeting is August the 20th. Does that sound right, Jeff?
Sorry?
I think the meeting is August the 20th. I think we already have the meeting set for.
Okay, so that's the end of the addition. So now we have in camera.
Make a motion, go on camera.
Okay. So Tina's here. Do we have, we don't have anything coming out of camera, do we? Motions or... You're good. Well, it's, it's just previously distributed. Did you want to talk about it?
So we did receive a letter from MP Colin Fraser responding to our concerns about the summer jobs program and the wording in it. I'm satisfied Colin's done all he can do within the parameters of what the PMO dictate to the MPs. I understand that. At least, you know, he's stated it the way I think it should be, and we'll even go with that. You know, he puts a thought into that letter. That's not one that was just written by the PMO.
Plus, I was thinking, I think we made a motion earlier to send the letter.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, this is a response to the letter.
Yeah, this is a response to it, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
So I moved that letter, if it wasn't already done. Received and placed on file. Thank you for the timely response.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Motion to go on camera. Did you already do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Good stuff. You had a question?
No, just that Remo attachment doesn't look like it's attached properly to the side.
Oh.
I haven't issued it yet, so that's...
We just had it on our desk as a last minute. Thanks, Tina.
Thanks.